We've got, you know, each legislative session always offers new reforms, new lines being proposed. What education reform would you be in favor of?
I could be good and say just about anything the legislature puts forward, but it's always kind of been, my opinion, that a lot of times the legislature, we have a state school board system. It should be the experts in the state school system, but many times the legislators feel like it's necessary to dabble in the education process and stuff, and leaving it up to the experts many times. We also have the Help Out Association of School Boards, which is a kind of a support group and a policy institute that also supports the school boards. I know that a lot of times these issues, and most recently was, really didn't come out in our favor with the school choice. I mean, there are some academically good points to it, but I think the implementation of it is, doesn't really achieve the end results that we would hope for. And many times I think they're under different pressures than we are. But I think our school systems would be better off if we left more of the decision-making to the experts at the local level as well as at the state school board level.
Mr. Overcash, how do you think the school system can best support teachers in our current environment of increasing demands for achievement, testing, and documentation along with the additions to the required curriculum?
That is a difficult question, and I know at times we've had really good teachers who were willing to go to private schools for less pay because it required a whole lot less record-keeping. And I know, not trying to say that a lot of the extra stuff, obviously it has to be done, and tremendous amount of testing, record-keeping, that many of the teachers, so they not only they have to teach all day and go home and work on their lesson plans and grading, but they also have all the record-keeping that they have to do. Just, you know, as long as it's a regulation or rules that they have to follow, we just have to give them moral support. And maybe it's kind of a double-edged sword, you don't really want to reduce, you know, many of these policies have the third grade reading, the math proficiency, those kind of things. Like their intent is good, but they do require a lot of extra for public school systems.
Thank you.
Since the state report cards have been established, every school in Madison City has achieved an A. How significant is this accomplishment? And what does the school system need to do to maintain that success?
Well, not just that they have all maintained As, which is a remarkable achievement in and of itself, but every one of our schools, and I forget the exact details, but for the most part, our high schools, our middle schools, and our elementary schools ranked in the top 10 schools within the state or the top, in some cases, less than that. And that's an even more remarkable achievement. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm just truly amazed, I've sat in some data reviews and stuff, the amount of energy and effort, not just to analyze the data, but to, well, to collect the data, to analyze the data, formulate plans of whatever the issue is, and it's English language learners are not quite achieving as much as we'd like to do. And but to come up with a plan and execute that and the support at Central Office is amazing. And I'm truly amazed at the amount of effort they put into trying to continue to make anything, any effort, I mean, any item they identify that's lacking, we'll get to try to do what it takes to, you know, to improve that situation.
What's the impact of growth in Triana Madison City schools?
Well, it's definitely an impact, but as, as we all know, Triana has been a good neighbor. They joined with us early and allow us to become a school system. I don't think we would probably ever achieve that without them. They've passed their taxes as we have to continue to participate. It's kind of like the situation in Madison. I know that the city council and the mayor's office has worked hard to keep growth manageable. It's not always easy, and situations change. But Triana, you know, has to also take care of itself, you know. I think when the Madison utilities have to take over their water system, that'll allow them to expand where they had been held back otherwise. And, you know, it's a nearby area that people that might not have lived in Madison can, you know, live there, and it's going to continue to grow, and it'll be a completely different Triana than another, you know, decade or so. Probably wanting to be recognizable, but we have to just, as a city and school system, work with them to try to help manage it as good as possible.
How would you handle a situation where you disagree with the superintendent?
Well, that doesn't happen very often, but it's, I'm sure most of y'all certainly, kind of every day, know that school boards operate a little bit different than cities. Superintendents, I might like the mayor, but not completely. And for the most part, we have to, we cannot address issues without being brought to us by the superintendent. As a group, we have worked well, always discussing issues, work sessions, really hash out what the differences are and try to work to find a compromise. But ultimately, the superintendent has to bring something to the board, and then the board has to, if it requires a vote, we would have to vote on it and see how it goes from there. And I think compromise and really having respect and listening to both sides goes a long, long way.
What is your impression of the special education services in Madison's school system?
I think by and large, they are good. Anytime you're dealing with special education, whether it's the special ed end or the gifted end, the parents are always pointing toward, you know, and it's always a difficult situation. And sometimes it appears that maybe we, we don't exactly do what, you know, the parents would like, and we had some issues. And when they're identified, I mean, from one, I know there's cameras in all the special ed classes now, and a lot of the policies of how that is dealt with is improving. But so my spectrum too, it's not just autism or hard appearing, or there's a wide spectrum. And we have a really good staff, and they, they work hard to try to do what's best for the child, which ultimately is not always what the parents want. And that's sometimes a difficult choice to have to make, but there's always room for improvement. But it's one of those areas that private schools and other organizations like that, they just don't have to deal with, and we have to try to do the best. And if we fall short, then we try to, you know, improve it and do what's necessary to correct it.
Thank you.
How would you balance the needs for the teachers and personal professional development with the added costs or challenges of providing substitutes?
Would you, rephrase that again, substitutes?
Yeah, how would you balance the needs of the teachers to continue pursuing professional development while addressing the added costs or challenges of providing substitutes for them to do that?
Well, continued professional development is invaluable, and one of those, in that area, is the nationally board-certified teachers. We have an amazing number of those, and that's in addition to just regular professional development. It's necessary to, I know we provide mentors and stipends for both the mentors and the people going through the nationally-certified process. And then there's also, they get an increase in salary also. But just general professional development is really necessary. I mean, it's kind of like school boards, we have to keep going, take our training classes and stuff. Since I've been there, I think I have over 40 hours of training classes and stuff, both online and at conferences. But it's just, it's a necessary thing, and we just have to make sure we have substitutes or other ways for taking care of, to allow the teachers to continue their development.
Thank you. If you could improve one thing about Madison City schools, what would it be? And what is the greatest area for improvement that you would see in the school system?
Wow. That is a difficult question. In my experience, when we, I've seen a problem, it's usually in the areas that are already being identified, studied, and corrected. Continued growth is, obviously, is probably our biggest problem that we have. And not just the growth, but unfortunately, the economy. We got really, really lucky, we got to build a baseball stadium and a middle school and another elementary school at a time when construction prices, both of labor and materials, was relatively low, but it's going through the roof now. It has doubled and tripled in a lot of bases. And that's going to be a struggle to continue to finish up our next elementary school and take a year or two breath, and then probably have to add on to an elementary school, and right after that, add on to the hospitals as addressed the growth issue. I begin with the second part of your question.
Was, what's the greatest area, so maybe pretty much that, the growth situation?
Should Board of Education meetings videos be archived?
I would not have a problem. I didn't, I was just saying, since I'm sitting there, I didn't really, I knew they were transmitted, but I guess they're not being archived. It's an evolving issue. I know way back in the dark ages, when we went from two-inch pack of material to an electronic agenda, council meetings, everybody was like, oh god, we can't do that. You know, and then till, what was it, '42, and it was not interactive. It's, we have to evolve with society and technology. And I just, at one point in time, it was probably a larger cost and a more difficult thing to do. It gets easier and easier, and quite frankly, our, our school board meetings, you know, for the most part, not controversial, I'm not sure if we would not want to archive them, but it just takes the time and it takes to set up that kind of process. I mean, you go out to YouTube and Google all kinds of board meetings.
Okay. What should be the role of the school system in helping meet workforce development needs? Is it doing enough?
That's another area that I was truly amazed at, that the more I got into it, we have, I think, over, over 100 courses in the middle school and high schools that are kind of geared toward workforce development. In addition to college and career types, for instance, there's a, we have a joint program with Calhoun and graduated like 40-something welders with their first level certification. They, I'm always amazed at the medical programs at the schools and the culinary. And being an engineer, it's like, I would appreciate this. It's like, and if we had opportunities like that when we were in high school, we didn't even have opportunity in like some of these things they get to do in college. And I think that there is a movement coming, as we all know, that we need more and more of the trade programs. A lot of the local, like the builders have a program where they train inter-level carpenters and H-back people, and if they graduate, they give them a set of tools just because they need them. I think Calvin also has an automotive repair program like that. You know, the shortage of everything from bricklayers, plumbers, electricians, you know, draftsmen, there's tons of careers that can be quite productive, and I mean, in some cases, more than, you know, a college degree in Russian literature. But we, we need to help continue to support workforce development. I mean, that's been kind of a lifeblood out of the high school metropolitan areas, that we continue to focus, focus on workforce development and retention on loan professionals after they, you know, finish their degree or their certifications.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. I appreciate you applying and being here tonight.
Well, I appreciate it. It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve so far, and I would love to keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very nice to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, we're going to begin, and I should close the door. Okay, so we're going to start. Say, Peter Pillo, thank you very much for being here and applying for school board. I'm going to begin with an open question, and then we're going to just go down the line, starting with Lauren. So let's begin by asking you, what motivates you to want to become a board member?
Well, hi, everybody, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you all today. What motivates me to be on the school board is several things. First, I myself and my family are benefiting greatly from all of the volunteer work that previous board members, of course, educators, administrators have done to take the school system to where it is. And I see it as a great opportunity for me to serve and give back to the community in this way. I also believe that I have a strong skill set in leadership, in my work in a nonprofit institute. You know, I understand the being under a budget and turning against me and all that, and all that kind of stuff. And so I just, as much as I like, you know, helping out in the classroom here when I can, I feel like this is more suited to my skill set and what I would love to share with the community.
Thank you, Flo, for applying. I really appreciate it and going through this interview process. I know it can be a bit stressful, so we're just going to be a deep breath then. There you go, very good. My first question for you is, a recent limestone county sales tax for schools failed its renewal. It accounts for $1.7 million to go directly to Madison City schools. What should the school system do differently to achieve a better result?
You know, I think a lot of that really has to do with community communication, not just, you know, the public understanding, the impact of those dollars on the schools, and, you know, what happens when, you know, that does a pat spray. And so I think that's, that's a big part of it. I think if people, you know, understood also the impact on, you know, maybe they don't have kids, and so they think they don't have to vote and those types of things, or they go against it because they don't have schoolchildren. But it really impacts so many more things in our community, from, you know, as simple as property values, right? People want to be in Madison and in the Madison City School District, to just the support of the community and feeling like, you know, we have mutual support.
Thank you.
School board members must often advocate at the local, state, national levels in support of our schools. Do you have any experience advocating at these levels? Do you have the time and desire to advocate or to learn to advocate for our schools?
Sure. I have a limited experience, I would say, but I have some experience in kind of my professional life. I, a few years back, served as the advancement of the Academy of Sciences Science and Technology Policy Fellow. And so I was in DC for a year, advocating for different science policy issues. I have, in my role at Hudson Alpha, often talked with, or here and there, I'd say, talking with elected officials. And then I also talk with, for example, deans and presidents of universities and so on. So, and yes, I am, the time commitment, I understand, is significant, but it's something that I'm absolutely willing to make time for. And yes, I'm always happy to learn.
I'm the easiest question, I will just approach you. What, I had to ask this differently than I would ask personally. What would you bring to the board that is not only...
So I think, you know, I have two kids in elementary school. There's, you know, one other board member with children in elementary school. My oldest, the year after next, is going to be at Journey Middle School, so I don't think there's been representation from Journey yet. And I'm working on, you know, I'd like to see more diversity there on the board.
I'd like to ask you about elected versus appointed boards. What is best for Madison City?
I think what's best for Madison City is an appointed board. And the reason I believe that is because elections, especially for the school board, can, you know, allow for the intermingling and topics that are more, better reserved for politics, and sometimes even national politics, that I don't think really should be part of how we're making decisions at a community-school board level.
The mental health of our students continues to be a significant concern. As a school board member, what do you see as your role in ensuring adequate mental health services are provided to our students?
So this is really near and dear to my heart. You know, this is something that I have dealt with myself and with family members, and I believe that psychological safety in any environment is just as important as physical safety. And I think as a school board member, it is on us to ensure that educators and administrators have the resources to be able to assist students with any mental health issues. So I think more than anything is making sure that we have the resources and the education so that people are aware and that they can address any, you know, under those areas for them.
Hey, thanks for being here. It was an honor. Each legislative session, we see new educational reform. What educational reform would you be in favor of?
I would be in favor of anything that ensures that educators and administrators have, are well compensated, so good salaries, good benefits, that that is, you know, ensured kind of across the board. I would be in favor of making sure that as we allow all parents to make choices about the education of their children, we're not taking away resources from those who can't make those choices.
How do you think the school system can best support teachers in our current environment of increasing demands for achievement, testing, documentation, along with the additions of their regular required curriculum?
Sure, so, you know, I think that there's, this is something that I experienced with my kids' teachers. There are so many apps and systems for entering grades, entering information messaging. It feels like every year I have to learn something different to communicate, you know, how my kids should go home, where their grades are, all that kind of stuff. And so I can't imagine being on the other side, trying to fill in that, that information, right? And so I think anything that helps streamline and simplify that process so that they can really, you know, spend the majority of their time preparing to teach and teaching, right? That's, that's what they're here for. So anything to reduce the administrative burden on teachers, I think, is valuable. I already mentioned, you know, we want to be able to recruit and retain the best teachers that we can. And so one way to do that for sure is make sure they, they've got fixed salaries, good benefits, and that, you know, they, they want to stay with us. And then finally having, you know, the resources and the training that they need, and their specialties and what, you know, they teach, to make sure that they feel prepared and empowered to go in the classroom and, you know, kind of hit those, those standards and get the kids ready.
Since the state report cards were established, every school in Madison City schools has achieved an A. How significant is that accomplishment? And what does the school system need to do to maintain that success?
Well, it's significant in that it, you know, really demonstrates the hard work of everybody in the district and the community in supporting our schools. I think that what we need to do to, to maintain those grades is to, you know, related to the, the growth in the, in the city, and I know that's, you know, one of the big challenges, is make sure that we continue to zone the schools so that we maintain the poverty level equal across all the schools. And I think that's important because, you know, that type of success not only relies on the educators and administration, but the, the community's support and availability of the parents to just help out, whether it's with time, resources, whatever that might be.
You just, you just mentioned growth. What's the impact of growth in Triana Madison City schools?
The impact of growth in Triana is that Triana children are bused to Madison, attend Madison City schools. And my understanding is that our city council doesn't have control over the growth in Triana, right? And so it can be a little bit of a bell card, right, in terms of growth and anticipating that. that.
How would you handle a situation in which you deserve this student?
I think I would want to have an open conversation, an honest conversation to understand his point of view and, you know, how he's coming to that, that decision or that opinion. I understand that there's, you know, a lot of things that when one, one decision or one change is, is made, it can have impact, you know, a domino of impacts, that somebody who is overseeing the school system and sees kind of the work of the boots on the ground has that insight that myself, you know, or any other board member might not have. And so I think any disagreements would be best handled with just an open conversation and understanding and seeing if there's a way to compromise so that we hear everybody out and come to the best resolution.
What is your impression of special education services in Madison City Schools?
So I had a limited experience with it. I know that there's significant work being done to expand the, the spaces for special education, especially at Pop Jones. And I know from, you know, my experience with at Horizon is that the teachers and even the students are aware of special education and do what is asked of them to, you know, allow special education students into their, into the classroom, into learning with them, all those kinds of things. And so I, I think that it's something that the best way is to just make sure that they have the resources so that each student can have their needs in an education system.
Okay, sure.
So how would you balance the need for teachers to continue in professional development with the college and challenges of providing substitute teachers in order for them to be able to...
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. That's difficult because it's the balance of time, right? Time and, and money to make that happen. I think it would be interesting to see if there's other funding sources that could be either through grants or local fundraising specifically for those activities, just to give teachers the ability to pay for the subs so that they can go to the training that they need. Perhaps also looking to see, you know, what are, what are the greatest needs across the district in terms of training? And instead of, you know, sending teachers who went off to obtain that training, bring the training here on site so that they can all do it, you know, on the evening, the weekends, something like that, that doesn't require the subs, or they don't have to travel, you know, just different, different ways of, of, to meet that need of, try to think about it that way.
If you could improve one thing about Madison City Schools, what would it be? And what is the greatest area for improvement that you see in Madison City Schools?
Sure. So I, I think something that has improved greatly since my kids started five years ago now is communication. So I think there's been a great improvement in communication, you know, from administration in my school and from at the district level. So that's been really great to see. I think, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty, maybe anxiety in the community about the growth and how that's going to be handled, what are, what can we expect in terms of zoning? People just want to understand kind of what's coming down the pipe. And so maybe a little bit more information around those things.
Should school board meetings be videos? Let me start it. Should the videos of school board meetings be archived?
So I think they should be available for a certain amount of time. You know, we can't all be there or even watch it streamed live, and so I think it would be nice for them to be available for, you know, I don't know, a few weeks, a few months. But it, it kind of becomes untenable at some point to start archiving things indefinitely.
Do you volunteer in your school system? If so, then what capacity?
Sure, so I volunteer among the PTA at Horizon. I help out with the disparate wear, so I don't do anything with, you know, ordering t-shirts and magnets and then setting up the table and selling them at PTA meetings and that kind of stuff. And then I help out when I can with, they do duty free lunch for the stu-, the teachers when we come in and watch the kids play so that they can have a free lunch hour, so I do that when my schedule allows. And then whenever, you know, I can, if I can't be there, I'm just, I tell them, somebody send me a Venmo, I will help out anyway that I can.
What are your thoughts about the Madison City School budget and the priorities that are reflected there?
Oh, I was, I was reviewing the budget today, actually, in preparation, I'm just, you know, looking at, at the differences in, in the operating budget versus the cap and budget and trying to understand, you know, how that fits, divvy up and where the, the revenue sources come from and all of that. And so, you know, I, I think that operating obviously has to be a priority, but the, the bigger impacts, or the, I think what we can make bigger impact is really investing and making sure that we have the space to address the growth and then for teacher retention and recruitment.
All right, so we asked you before about elected versus appointed boards. This one kind of the same, but first on elected or appointed superintendent?
I would say appointed superintendent.
Why?
Because especially at the superintendent level, I think there is a certain level of rigor that you really have to bring to that position, you know, experience. And I think that that really needs to be done in a way that evaluates applicants in terms of their, their resume, their experience, their references, to understand, you know, what their goals are for the district, to be understand the district as it currently is and so on. I think that that is best done through an interview and selection process than through an election.
I had to laugh with your duty free lunch comment. I remember that from years ago and having to go home and have a nap afterwards. That's exhausting.
They're short lunches, but my gosh.
Oh my gosh, they're intense, especially for the little kids, you're opening a thousand milk cartons. I wanted to ask, how many school board meetings have you been to?
I don't know in total. I try to attend one quarterly, either the person who are watching, streaming, watching the stream.
And you watch the regularly streaming, the streaming version?
Yeah, I usually watch the stream version, and like I said, weekly, I would say, the frequency, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The vision for Madison City Schools is empowering all students for global success. What does that mean to you?
So I think about that not global success in terms of around the globe, go anywhere, be anywhere you can be, of course, another to be able to do that, but to me, it means more of global success in terms of whatever you decide to do, actually Madison City Schools, we want to empower you to be ready for that. Whether you're going for, you know, for your college track, or you're going to do something else, you're going to go, you know, get a technical training or certification, we want you to be ready for that.
What do you see as the board of education's role and the superintendent's role in the school system?
So the, the superintendent's role, I see more as leading the, the operation of, of the schools. And the board is more as a, a council from the superintendent, but also making higher level decisions that have to do with budget, you know, the higher level kind of hiring decisions, those kinds of things, to make sure that those decisions reflect the values of the, of the community.
How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carry out?
How can the board know if the goals are being accomplished? Well, I think what's important is to have a strategic plan for the district and to have board input into that strategic plan and then have, you know, measurable outcomes year over year that we can say, okay, are we meeting these goals or do we need to make adjustments? We're not meeting them, why? Can we, reallocate resources? Do we need to, you know, abandon this for something else? I think having, you know, regular reporting of how the schools are doing and how we're growing towards that strategic plan is important.
What do you see as the board of education's role versus the superintendent's role in education?
So I guess we've got...
All right. So from a standpoint, I mean, you're applying for this, and, you know, talk about your availability to execute the job, and it's a five-year commitment, so you have, I know we talked earlier about you have the time and, and, but five years in the commitment. You know, what do you see as your goals over that time period and your abilities?
Yeah, so, you know, I think obviously as a working mom or two, yeah, that's a very fair question. My, you know, I have to talk to some of the board members exactly about these things, you know, what exactly is the time commitment? How do you support each other? And I, I think that I can make the time for it. My kids are still young, they're in second and fourth grade, so we're not really overstretched with activities. They're two blocks over K-pop right now. But I think that's something that, that we can certainly put into, into the schedule. I have the support of my spouse and my boss at work is very supportive of me being in this role. I also, there's several events around town that I know the board attends and that I'm already attending for my job, so there's a little bit of overlap there at least.
I just know my questions.
Great job, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so to begin, could I ask you, what motivates you to want to become a board? I think, I mean, it's really about seeing a reflection of what our school system looks like, as in terms of our student body, faculty and our staff, looking at the makeup of our current school board. I notice that obviously there's a majority male, and I feel it's where I know that a majority of our teachers and our volunteers within schools are female. And so I, I think just having that perspective, or maybe even just a better reflection in the balance in that. And so whether it's me or another female call party individual, obviously, but just to see a better reflection.
Thank you for being here. I know it can be intimidating, just take a breath and you're great. A recent limestone county sales tax for schools failed its renewal. It accounts for one point seven million dollars for Madison City Schools. What should the school system do differently to achieve a better result?
There are times that I feel like, because the issue is so, I guess, a hotbed topic, that sometimes a third party that is not involved in this area oftentimes needs to help provide some clarity and really look at the facts without being necessarily involved. I guess from my years within banking, it has just always been part of our practice to bring in auditors or just third parties to take a look at our books. And so I feel like that's always provided us with a better view of what the real issue could be, on what perhaps could be holding it up. I guess that's the first comes to mind for me.
Okay, thank you.
School board members must often advocate at the local, state, national levels in support of our schools. Do you have any experience advocating at these levels? Do you have the time and desire to advocate or learn to advocate for our schools?
Well, for the past 20 years, I have been in marketing and PR for financial institutions, malls, and now for a law firm. And we have advocated, I guess, at some level, whether it's city or county or state level, not necessarily anywhere on the national platform. I've also done this within my nonprofit work with the American Advertising Federation. So I've done this regionally, advocating for two politicians about fair advertising practices and other aspects like that. And I believe that my firm would support me in this position because we have others within our organization who are heavily involved in either school education or even local government at some levels.
What, what would you bring to the board that's not already there?
I think for me, bringing my years of experience, from my marketing and PR background, but also the balance of my nonprofit, nonprofit and community work. I'd like to think that I have, with all these years of experience, have developed great relationships within our community, but also have developed the, the ability to hear both sides and to, I guess, communicate that, take that in before making any type of rash decisioning. And then hopefully clarifying if there are any heated debates about any particular issues, taking it down a notch. I guess part of one of my strengths is being a peacemaker, and so I'd like to think that could help in this particular position, or any position on a community level.
Elected versus appointed boards, which is better for Madison City?
I think in this particular position, I, I'd like to think that appointed makes more sense because I've heard feedback from other areas who've had elected school board members in, I never realized all of the inner workings of how they get elected and, I guess it's always made more sense to me to be able to see the history, see the experience, see the involvement, put it all on paper, and really identify who is the best candidate. Versus who has the larger...
The mental health of our students continues to be a significant concern. As a school board member, what do you see as your role in ensuring adequate mental health services are provided to our students?
In researching this position, I really didn't realize the number of resources that we already have within our schools. And I think part of that is really just educating our parents that these, that there are resources out there, and then also educating our students that they exist. I know a lot of times, teachers probably, they just, they've said it 10 times, and perhaps I know a lot of times, teachers probably, they've said it 10 times, and perhaps the school systems or the school board has said it 10, 20 times, and you just haven't heard it. And it's almost as though you don't hear the message until you need that service, but keeping a consistent message that these services are available at all levels.
Thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate the time. Each legislative session, we see new educational reforms being proposed. What educational reforms would you be in favor of applying? What's that?
So that's a, that's a very broad question in terms of there are particular reforms that you're, I guess, you hold more important in this particular area or in my county versus others?
So, not necessarily. I'm looking to see, I mean, from this, I'm looking to see, like, where are your passions? What is important to you? What areas do you think are the forms of education? It's more getting inside of where are your mindsets?
Well, for me, being, my parents are immigrant and I am first generation, I really believe that multiculturalism, diversity is very important to expose our kids to. I feel like that's the reason why my husband and I selected living in Madison because it had the best balance. And then we also looked at schools to see the types of programs that they provide. I didn't have that luxury growing up in central Mississippi where I was .001%. And then back in my day, I was other. There weren't any other groups other than black and white. And so for me, that is really important to me. That's, I love seeing our schools colorful, in terms of skin, in terms of ideas, in terms of programs classes offer. That's really important to me. Recently, I saw, and I don't know if this is a hot topic here yet, but recently I saw a story on 60 Minutes about banned books, and, I guess, can take the heated portion out of it, but what I loved is how the school board challenged the people who were challenging the banned books to read all 90, I'm not sure if you know the story that I'm talking about. They challenged them to read all 90 of the books, and when they had the community and the people who were up against it, they only ended up banning maybe four of the books. And to me, I guess the report, I don't know at what level we're specifically talking about reforms, but if we're talking about like changing what's in our libraries, changing what our curriculums are, we need to have a more well-rounded view of what, how that will really impact our students and our faculty and our staff. Because I'm, I'm in the territory of thinking of diversity training and multiculturalism in our classes, more so than anything, not, I guess, really any specific topic. But I, I feel like we have a great start in Madison. I know that at least my children's experience, both of them at Mill Creek Elementary, has been wonderful in terms of them learning different languages, learning about different countries. I have a lot of hope that that will continue and that they'll be provided that opportunity to learn about all different types of people and cultures and programs.
Katia, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended?
This is the last time I was here. Probably only one or two, but they've been online. Because this is oftentimes right after school is when my children have sports practices and music lessons and things like that. But I'm really grateful for, there's some websites, I think there's a platform on social media, of Madison that I watch it on usually, and it just pops up on my feed, so I can do that on my own.
Since the state school, the state report cards were established, every school in Madison City Schools has achieved an A. How significant is this accomplishment? What does the school system need to do to maintain that success?
I definitely think that is so important. I probably think that many of the transplants that I've met, just either through my work experience or my community experience, have often asked about our schools, specifically within Madison, and they ask, how do you know that they're better? And that is the one platform that I can direct them to, to say, we're compared apples to apples to all the other schools within this state. And oftentimes, and I can't even remember the name of the website, but that has been my best resource to share with them. So, yes, I do find it very important that the school systems are rated, or the schools in general are rated, because effectively that they're all rated on the same scale.
Olivia, this is a question, this is, it's about the impact of growth, but what triangle, what impact triangle does this include?
Actually, I was just talking to an officer outside about growth in the Madison area and just about how fast this area is growing. And I don't have all the facts in hand about specifically about Triana, I guess, being folded into our school system, but some of the, I guess, not issues, I just feel like we have some overcrowding issues, specifically at Mill Creek Elementary. And I'm fearful of the fast pace of growth in our area is causing our lines for schools to have to shift and change, and that's caused a lot of heartburn with a lot of families. I've spoken with quite a few families in the Athens area who are seriously considering moving to Madison because they're more like, they're not moving the lines as much as Athens is right now, because Athens is experiencing a lot of growth. And I don't know why I think I have some insight, but do you think Madison's going to move their lines anytime soon, which neighborhoods do you think are safe? And that, I guess that's what my biggest fear is, is that having to move children and families and, you know, at least for my family, we love the school system that we're in, we don't want to leave it anytime soon unless we're forced to, like some of these Athens families who specifically moved to those particular neighborhoods for those school systems and now are no longer in those schools. So controlled growth, I know is, I guess, the coined term, and I don't necessarily know how you control that, because we want the growth, but then we're tasked scholars to help our school system and, you know, roads and hospitals, but how do we figure out what that equation looks like to keep our education at the highest level for our students? I'm aware that it definitely exists.
Do you volunteer in the school system, and if so, in what capacity?
Yes, I do. My previous job, I was lucky enough to work and live on Volch Road and at the end of it, at Mill Creek Elementary. For nine years, I volunteered in at Mill Creek in various ways, whether it's reading in the classroom, being the lunchroom monitor. If you ever want to be humbled, that is definitely the position for you. It's the life story of Dr. Molly Coen to that particular time. I have also hosted tables at multicultural night for several years to represent time mode, and I feel like that's, I guess, been one of my greatest joys of volunteering, is the lunchroom, you know, there are really funny stories that come out of that, but the multicultural night is like just one of my favorite events because I don't realize how many different countries are represented in our schools. I know Mayor Finley will often say at some chamber meetings, how many different languages are spoken in our schools? And Mayor Battle will also say that, and, you know, you just hear it as a number, but then you actually see it, and then you hear it, and you taste it, and you hear the music. It's a wonderful experience, so, oh, and I guess I've done room tour for parties and things like that too, but those have probably been my biggest volunteer goals.
What is your impression of the special education services in Madison City Schools?
I have had a really good experience with them. My son, who is in first grade, was recommended for some speech therapy and some reading programs. It was amazing because, you know, you think you know your child, and I never even picked up on these things. So I loved that feedback from the teachers that he needed, and I was so grateful that those services were available and that they met with me on a regular basis. It's a very different experience for other special education programs in other states. I actually had a friend this summer move here from North Carolina because her public school system didn't have a program to help her daughter with ABD. And she moved here for the summer to do Randolph or Green Gates program. And it was just fascinating to me because I just thought all public school systems were really proactive about special, special education programs and making recommendations, but that's not the case. So it made me feel even more lucky that we have those services available to us, especially in the house.
How would Madison need to support teachers to continue pursuing professional development? By answering the cultural challenges of providing substitute for that?
I definitely realize that education, I think, never stops, not only for our teachers, but also for us professionally. And so I feel like we have to figure out a way to create those opportunities for them. But you're right, there is a cost to it for the substitute teachers, and I realize that there are budgets for it. So I don't know whether or not this particularly worked in previous organizations that I've been in, but we, I guess, had similar situations where we've had professionals who want to go back and add a particular degree, but they mutually agree on a timeline for these and what that cost is. And it's almost around the cost of the analysis of time. And not everyone can do it all at once. I mean, it's really a much bigger picture to it, but those are, I guess, some finite examples that we've had to look at in my life, at a financial institution especially, because we have a certain number of tellers, and they need to be on the timeline to really win the money. But we want to encourage education because it's escaping me what the name of the certification is for our teachers that takes quite a few years to get...
National Board Certificate?
Yes, National Board Certificate, and it's, I know, such an incredible experience for them. Just one that comes to mind is Coach Klein at Mill Creek Elementary recently got hers, and she was telling me about her experience in the program and how difficult it was to create that balance between, you know, the obvious of working on the clock and, even at her hours, she would have to work even longer and then study, and then still take care of her family. So I almost feel like that, I guess you know that those challenges are going to come, and if the organizations such as the school in general can figure out what that balance looks like in terms of time and money and mutually, I don't know, mutually agree on a, mutually agree on a plan that both can be somewhat appeased by, then we should report and cheer them on if they want to further their education, because I think that only improves our students' experience.
If you could improve one thing about Madison City Schools, what would it be? And what is the greatest area for improvement that you see in Madison City Schools?
Sorry, I keep going back to multicultural night, but I almost just wish that, I was just more of a mandatory program that our students would participate more in. I, most of the families that I saw participating in it were the actual families that were hosting the tables. And I guess my hope for my children when we moved to Madison is I wanted them to know that they weren't the only Asian person in the whole school. I know that sounds weird, but I was pretty much the only Asian person my entire life going through schools. So I never wanted them to have that, that challenge. I wanted them to know that they're all different colors and different countries and different languages and different smells. And I think the other children in the school need to see that and experience that too, not necessarily have to go there for a grade or anything, but if we did figure out a way to open their eyes to the bigger world, because we are always promoting how Huntsville is such a melting pot of an area. But if you don't go to those events, if you aren't required to read those particular things or experience those particular things, you can keep it pretty narrow if you like. But I also think that's one of Madison's little strengths, is that the program even exists, and that's a wonderful start to it. I also wish we could expand the languages too, and the school curriculum that has to do with the teachers, but that's another hope of mine, because my daughter is going to journey next year, and when I saw her language options, I made the assumption that language options were the same at each of the middle schools, and they're not. And that would be probably one, personally, one of my wishes would be to see, I guess, more consistency with each of the schools in having their offerings. So, you know, your little best friends have like five languages to choose from that live on the limestone side, and then we're on Madison's side, and they're like, well, we have three at journey, so.
Should the videos of Board of Education meetings be archived?
If we have the space and capability for it, why shouldn't we be trying some? Are, I mean, are there topics that we're speaking about that, well, shouldn't we, I shouldn't have access to? I don't know. So, I mean, I, I'm in favor of transparency.
How would you handle a situation in which you disagree with the superintendent?
I would hope that I would be given the opportunity to discuss it with the superintendent. I think that's probably the biggest challenge, is being able to feel comfortable enough to share my thoughts with them. I think that oftentimes, and I'm not sure whether he says this, but I have an open door policy, but a lot of times people are afraid to approach that door, or I've seen that in my previous lives where at Redstone Federal Credit, a very large organization, a junior would always say, I know it's always something. And I would, I was comfortable enough to go in there and talk to them, but I would talk to my other coworkers who were so fearful of going in there, and it was just so surprising to me. So I think that the superintendent... So I think that the superintendent's probably done a very good job saying, if you have an issue, come to me. And I feel like that I'm the type of person that I could do that. I guess I had a friend where, um, I'm not as fearful about communication. Because I'm not talking at people. That's part of, I guess, my communication style is speaking with people instead of at them. How about?
What are your thoughts about the Madison City School budget and the priorities that are reflected here?
I know the budget is very tight because of the growth in our area. But I know that we have to grow our schools. And we're obviously building another school on the limestone side. I, I guess I just keep trying to think, so where are we going to find these additional dollars to help build more schools? Because it's just ringing in my head about Mill Creek again being just one of the larger schools. Pretty sure already at over a hundred percent capacity. And how are we going to figure out in the budget, where are we going to put all these new students that are moving into this area and where are we going to find those dollars? And how are we going to reshuffle them back in the budget? So, um, I haven't carefully, I guess, combed over the budget to be able to tell you the exact line item in the budget. But I guess I'm just thinking about previous, um, chamber meetings that I've been to where Superintendent Nichols has spoken and has talked about those challenges and that he's very aware of overcrowding or shifting the lines and populations within the schools. So, um, I guess I don't have a wonderful answer to tie that up with a bow, but back to my banking world. There are going to have to be, there are programs and there are line items that have to be cut because you have to think of the bigger picture sometimes. And so I know that can be painful, but oftentimes for the survival of the bigger picture, it's appropriate. But that's the financial portion of it. We like guidelines. But I think it's really knowing what those line items are and what those programs are that may be, um, challenging or needing reappropriation. That, those are going to be difficult decisions, I think, with any budget, especially on a scale like Madison City. Did you eat lunch, or dinner? Yeah, I was like, I saw him come in, he opened the door and he'd been for me, so I saw your food.
We'll be back in 30 minutes for the next one. We are not going to make any decisions this evening. The first time we would be able to vote is at the next council. And we're just going to take turns starting at District One and we're going to vote for County Seven.
Sure.
First, I'd like to ask you what moment you want to become a board member?
Sure, great question. So I just want to first like thank you for the opportunity to be here. I mean, it's late, so I appreciate your patience and attention to detail. And so I am a longtime resident of Madison and moved here with my family in 2007. So I was just me and my husband. And since then, I've had three daughters. So I have a daughter at Top Jones, I have a daughter at Journey Middle School, and I have a daughter at Horizon Elementary. And so I got everybody, I got it all spread. And, um, I, uh, it was interesting, um, at the beginning of the school year, there was a breakfast that they put on the, the school board and Dr. Nichols. And one of the things that he talked about was, um, that's, I think the statistic he gave was like eighty percent, eighty-six percent of families in Madison City have school-aged children. Um, and that essentially our school system is what drives the growth of Madison City. And I think we have an amazing school system. Another thing that really stood out from his presentation was he was comparing, um, how our school system performs, you know, compared to other school systems in the state and then comparing the budgets. Um, and it was really quite amazing how much Madison City Schools does with far less than some of our neighbors to the south, for example. Um, so I think that the school system does an amazing job. And I very much, you know, respect the work that Dr. Nichols does. I think having diverse views and opinions on the school board, um, having the school board be sort of the voice of the community, um, having the parents who are in the trenches of it, um, still, I think that's, uh, that benefits, um, the governance of the board. Um, my professional background, I'm an attorney. Uh, until recently, there was a conflict that prevented me from applying, or I would apply a long time ago. Um, uh, the attorneys who represent the school board who are no longer at the firm or on the shareholders. So, um, that conflict has resolved. Um, but being an attorney, I sort of have, although I don't do school board work and never have, I do understand sort of the complexities that face school systems. Um, schools face a labyrinth of state and federal regulations that they have to work their way through. Um, and I understand the role of the school board, which is not to be the day-to-day manager, um, but to provide oversight, to provide, uh, the voice of the community, to advocate for the students, um, and give guidance where appropriate. So that's why, that's why I'm home.
Thank you so much and thank you for applying, you yourself out there. And we really appreciate you being here tonight. Laura, a recent limestone county sales tax rules failed to renew. It accounts for $1.7 million for Madison City Schools. Excuse me. What should the school system do differently to achieve a better result?
That's a great question. Um, so I think that, um, I think part of what maybe is lacking is community understanding of the funding and how funding works for the school system. I know that sort of the complications between limestone county and Madison City and the annexations and all of that have created some hard feelings, uh, here and there along the way. There were similar issues that happened with Huntsville City and Madison City. And I don't know if you guys recall, at one point, there was a big bearing of the hatchet ceremony that was done by mayors. Um, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see, um, a recognition that the school systems benefit everyone. Even if you don't have a student in the school system, having an educated population is essential to a functioning society. So I, I think that's part of it. I think, um, having champions, um, that are out there in the community and that are the PR and the public face for the school system to explain to the public why these taxes are necessary and needed. And to see, you know, I think there's sort of this perception that it's just this huge pots of money that come. Um, and it's not true, right? Um, and that all of those pieces, property tax, sales tax, federal dollars, they are all important.
School board members must often advocate at the local, state, national level, it's important for our schools. Do you have any experience advocating at these levels? Do you have the time and desire to advocate or to learn to advocate for our schools?
Thank you. That's a serious, great question. So I'm a professional advocate, um, and so advocating is something I'm very comfortable with doing. Um, I'm someone who writes their legislators, calls them. I happen to work around the corner from a state legislator and sometimes go down and give them my opinion on bills that are coming up. So I'm very comfortable with that, you can see. Um, you know, I was very pleased to see there was, uh, the recent school choice legislation that Dr. Nichols and the PTAs, you know, really came out and encouraged parents to contact their mothers, I did. Um, and so I, I'm comfortable doing that. Um, that's part of being a citizen and involved, you know, in civic engagement. I'm very comfortable with that.
So what would you rate this school board as now right here?
That's a great question. Um, I think, uh, a couple of things. I have, I do have, um, younger kids. Um, I, I think my kids are particularly at elementary school, I live in a different part of the city than I think several of the, of the current school members live in. Um, but frankly, man, I saw the list of applicants. I think you guys have a great selection of applicants. So I don't think that, uh, you know, I'm not going to be so bold to say I have some magic special formula, anything that I can bring that I don't think other people can bring. And, um, you know, it just wasn't the way I thought of being able to support the schools with the talents and time that I do have.
No superpower? I think it would, what model appears to work?
I love that question. It'd be wonderful, man, of course.
Elected versus appointed school boards, what is the best choice for Madison?
I believe appointed is the best choice for Madison. And I believe that we are a far too politicized society. Um, the politicization and the, the way that, um, you know, national politics has kind of pushed further and further and further down into the, the truly micro level, I don't think is in anyone's best interest. I think, um, having the school board be appointed by elected officials is a good balance. Um, the school board's authority is not the kind of authority that there should be direct and, you know, oftentimes partisan elections for. Um, that's, I just don't believe that's an appropriate form of, form of governance.
Good. Thank you for being here tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you're a board, how, how do you know that the board is successful? How do you grade yourself and know that you're being accomplished? And then how do you know you're possibly being committed to that as a board?
So how do we grade ourselves? I think, um, so a lot of ways. Um, I think first and sort of the sort of bedrock is student success. Um, I think, you know, we need to be putting forward policies that promote our students' abilities to, you know, move on to college or career, um, you know, and have successful futures. Um, I also think, uh, there's a lot of other metrics that are important to consider, like teacher retention, um, uh, you know, rates of retirement. And, um, you know, I would love to see feedback in terms of, um, you know, surveys from school employees, right? Certified, non-certified, you know, top to bottom, right? Of grading, you know, you know, how do we perform? You know, what could we do better? Um, because ultimately, the people who are in the schools day in, day out, doing the job of teaching and doing various administrative jobs know far more than we do, um, from the outside. Um, I think having a balanced budget, uh, you know, um, listening to the community and the constituents, you know, um, having people be willing to, uh, voice dissenting opinion. Um, I don't think that's a bad thing. And I think, um, having it, being open to, you know, community feedback on what we need to do better or differently. Um, and knowing that the people that they're going to talk to care and will listen. Um, so, yeah, that's, there's a lot of ways. I think there's a lot of ways to measure success.
The mental health of our students continues to be a significant concern. As a school board member, what do you see as your role in ensuring adequate mental health services are provided to your students?
It's a great question. Um, I think it's clear, um, that pandemic, social media, you know, there's just so many pressures on students now, um, that, um, I think, you know, mental health is, that is something that has to be addressed by the school system. You know, you can't just focus on teaching and not to look at the whole person. Um, so as the school board, you know, we want to make sure that there's appropriate funding for, um, counselors in the school. You know, even, even simple things like, um, my, my youngest said, now, Mom, if you get this job, you need to make sure that they can't take away recess from this behavior. Because that's really important. Um, and, you know, I, I said, sure. And then, of course, my, my middle daughter said, well, and you need to make sure that school starts later too. That's really, really important. Um, but, um, you know, I think setting policies with student health, mental health in mind, right? That recognizing that, um, test scores are not the only thing that matter, right? Um, and making sure that the whole culture of the schools and the school system is to support the entire child, not just their academic success, but their overall wellbeing.
I see the input being here tonight and Chris was able to take it down. Um, each legislative session, we see school reforms or education reforms. What reforms, education reforms, would you approve of and why?
Well, I can't think of any that recently I've seen from the state legislature that I support. Um, certainly legislation that prevents rating of funding for education I would support. I don't know that that falls under, um, school reform. Um, I think, uh, again, I, I think politicians need to stay out of education. Um, I think education is a community, um, activity, um, that shouldn't be politicized. You know, I, I don't support school choice legislation that I've seen. Um, I support more funding for public schools if I saw something like that. I think, um, I think teachers deserve more protections than they have. Um, I, I could imagine there would be some legislation along those lines that I would support. Um, but I don't support legislation that goes into, you know, um, what should and shouldn't be taught details in the classroom. To me, that's a community decision. That is something that the community should be involved in setting those standards. You know, with involvement from the parents, um, you know, the way we do it. You know, we have curriculum and parents are invited to review, comment on that curriculum. Um, but I, I think there's far too much, um, culture war, national issues that are getting, um, that make politicians headlines that don't do anything to actually help schools or students. So I can't think of any that I've seen proposed now in the legislature that I would support.
Laura, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended?
I believe I've attended three.
This school year?
No, I have not attended any this whole year. Um, I attended some in 2021, I believe. Um, I believe school, first four meetings on Monday nights or on Tuesday nights. So I'm not, you know, I'm not counting this one.
The vision of Madison City Schools is empowering all students for global success. What does this mean to you?
So to me, it means individualized education that recognizes that, uh, success for every student is going to mean something different. And supporting all paths to success, whether that's college, whether that's career, whether that's military, whether that's trade school, whether that's, whatever it is, that they have the skills. whatever it is, that they have the skills necessary to pursue whatever success means for that, for that student. And the confidence to know that they have an education that will enable them to go wherever they desire in the world.
Simone, you talked about growth. What, what impact does the growth in Triana have on Madison City Schools?
Growth in Triana? So I, I live off of dessert. So I'm familiar with the challenges, at least around transportation, that happen with the growth in Triana. And it's interesting to me how many families I know of who specifically, you know, sought out Triana because there were Madison City Schools, but the, the houses were at a lower cost than Madison City proper. So I think it's, it's an issue that is eventually going to have to be addressed in some way. Growth in general is an issue. You know, our schools are full. Growth for growth's sake isn't beneficial long-term. Of course, the, the school board itself doesn't have uptime authority, control over that. So I don't know what the long-term answer is, but it is something that I think will, there eventually will have to be really looked at and addressed to make sure that there's a sustainable solution that's equitable for everyone involved.
If you could improve one thing about Madison City Schools, what would it be?
I can improve one thing. It probably would be the transportation system. School buses, and I don't, I don't quite understand what the, I mean, what all of the pain points are. But I know on buses, there are kids sitting three to a seat, four to a seat, a lot. I don't think that's safe. Bus routes can sometimes be very, very long, to the point that parents really feel like they can't support, they can't rely on the, on the bus system. It's a real pain point, particularly for working parents, which is, I'm sure, the majority of the parents in the school district. And it's one of those things that I, I feel like there probably is a, a solution that could actually, that could really have an impact on kind of everyone's quality of life around the schools. So, you know, that's, really for that to be the biggest complaint is you're in pretty good shape.
So what are your thoughts about the Madison City Schools budget and priorities that they have now?
Yeah. I was really excited that arts and, and, and music were, and, and the student program was implemented across all of the elementary schools. But to me, it's really, I, I had that growing up, right? In elementary school, you, you always had either, you know, choir or band or, you know. So seeing that there is that emphasis all the way down to elementary school is important. And I always worry a little bit that there's a lot of money put into sports. I don't have, of course, it's sort of a personal bias. I don't have any kids active in sports in the school system. But I do, and, and the other issue I see and am concerned about is how expensive it is for parents, even with, you know, the funding that we have. You know, from my, my, this is an example, my oldest daughter's in the musical at Bob Jones and it was, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars for her to be able to participate. In addition to doing fundraising and all of that. And then when, you know, you have kids who are active across multiple schools, you lost that extra activities. It can really be a lot on parents. But at the same time, from what I've seen, I think the school system is doing the best it can with the means that it has to work with. And so, you know, I think we have to sort of look towards other places to increase revenue. I think the school, the school system's done a good job of setting priorities appropriately.
Can I see your impression of special education services?
Sure. I don't have any firsthand experience with special education services, but I know, I have friends, obviously, that do in the, in the, in the system. And I think it's something that we can do better. I, I think probably for the most part, my impression is or more than eighty to ninety percent of parents are very satisfied with the services that they get in special needs. But I think that there is a, a fair amount, a small minority, but not a substantial number of parents who are dissatisfied and have concerns. I mean, there have been safety concerns, there have been concerns in quality of staff, the numbers of staff, all of that. I also know that special education is very difficult to hire special educators. It's very difficult to retain special educators. And so I would like to explore what ways there are to work with the superintendent to, to improve that if possible. What quick ways are there to recruit and retain more qualified, more experienced, and just retain longer special educators, you know, professionals that assist in those classrooms?
How would you balance the meeting of teachers to ensure professional development opportunities where the problems and the challenges are by substitute teachers?
Yeah. I, so one thing I think that at least, again, I go at the elementary level, that I've seen is that by adding in those additional classes, it's given the primary teachers a lot more breaks in their day, right? So elementary level teachers, for a long time, their kids would only be out of their classroom for maybe PE and that was it during the day. Otherwise, they have no, playing period, they have no opportunities. So adding in those additional classes that allow the, the students to rotate gives those teachers more bandwidth in their day. So I think that's one way at the elementary level. Middle and high school level. I, you know, I, I think, I'm on a PTA journey and we were meeting with the, one of my assistant principals and she was talking about AHA. You know, they, they literally run out of bodies, right, for testing to be able to get, just to meet the minimum number of people in all of the places. And so, you know, we said, well, there's a lot of parent volunteers, you know, what, the PTA would be happy to support that, you know? I think that the PTAs at, at all of the schools would be willing to volunteer their time as a way of offsetting that cost. And, and it probably would have to not be during regular school hours. I don't know how that would work, right, within the requirements of kind of, you know, a substitute teacher. But, but that's a, that's another idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys. I think I'm the last one. I think you can tell.
No more. Thank you so much, Laura.
That's fine.
It is gonna fall backwards in a second.
No, of course not. I'm very excited.
Look at that smile.
It's funny, cause I was thinking when Lisa called, I'm like, okay. She said seven thirty and eight are left. And I was like, I'll take eight. And the reason I said eight is because I was in the morning and I was like, there's no way. Cause I'm definitely not like my system does. Do not schedule any before ten and do not call me before eight unless your husband's dying. And that's awesome.
My apologies. Grant, welcome and thank you for applying for the Board of Education. I'm going to begin with an opening question and then we're going to go down the line by district and we'll start with Laura. But to open, I'd like to ask you, what motivates you to become a school board member?
You know, I haven't sat around and thinking about that since Lisa called again. It's, it was a year or so ago that I put my name in the app. And my answer is after looking at all of the would-be colleagues and the folks that are also, also interviewed this evening is, I'm, I say that facetiously because they're all gross, more highly qualified than myself on paper for sure. There's a great panel of candidates that are, that have interviewed for this position and who are serving on school board. That being said, the saying about if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. I, I feel where I have value in the places where I live, whether that be at work, whether that be on my church board and anywhere that I have had the opportunity to serve and have the opportunity to serve, that my age brings something to the table. I'm, I'll be thirty-seven this year and we all can probably agree that we need people who are in the millennial age, the Z to the Z age and so on and so forth, to step into roles. Responsible people to be a voice that may otherwise be kind of heard. And I think that that is a large part that I bring to the table. I have a lot of leadership skills. I've been on church board for probably fourteen years. And I'm a leader at work in our region. I'm a financial advisor. That's my, my day job. So I think that I just have something to add. I think that I'm a good listener. I do talk a lot. People say, hey, Grant does talk a lot, but I also listen. I listen and I pride myself on receiving diverse perspectives, not formulating my answer before I listen to what someone has to say. Taking in the viewpoints and then making a determination. And I think that all of that is, could, is and could be valuable to the school board.
Grant, Grant, excuse me. A recent limestone county sales tax for schools failed in its renewal. That accounts for one point seven million dollars for Madison City Schools. What should the school system do differently to achieve a better result?
There's a lot of politics right now around funding of schools. And I think that there's some collaboration that can be had with those councils, state representatives and so forth, that are in decision-making places of authority. And to make those decisions, when we think about funding, we need to get creative. Maybe it's not a property tax that needs to fund our school. Maybe there's some other method of funding that we could explore. If it were me in the position, I don't know all of the answers, but I would give an answer, okay, this failed. What's next? Because we can't stop. We have to fund that gap. Alabama already has a school funding issue. So how do we fill that? We get in the room and we don't wait until we come up with a solution. There may be some other sources, like instead of revenue, whether that be on cigarettes, tobacco, alcohol, whatever the case may be, that we could look to. And maybe we could back up for a vote again and we have a voter campaign and we say, hey, this is why we need this. Maybe we didn't tell the story good enough.
Thank you.
School board members often advocate at the local, state and national levels in support of our schools. Do you have any experience advocating at those levels? Do you have the time, desire, time and desire to advocate or learn to advocate for our schools?
I believe that any experience that I have lends itself to this opportunity. Advocating specifically at state, local and federal levels. Short of being in council meetings and raising my voice, I'd say no. But there are plenty of places where I think that I have transferable skills that can lend themselves to be successful in, in that advocating for the school system. Can you read the live part of your question?
I'm just kidding. Would you be willing to, do you have the time and the desire to advocate and do you have, or are you willing to learn to advocate?
Thank you. The, 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 the question about the time, I'm very blessed that, excuse me, my job is very flexible. I make my own schedule. And I have the autonomy to run my business and to be involved in the community and the things that, with my family and personal and so forth. So absolutely I have the time, the willingness and I'm always willing to learn something.
What would you rate the school board as now already?
Well, I think I touched on that in my opening statement. I don't want to say, say, I don't mean this disparaging, but there's probably about twenty years difference between me and anybody else who'd be on the school board. I think that one brings a different perspective. I think that, you know, it's stated in my, my qualifications that I kind of briefly put there outside of my resume. Being a person of color, I mean, that's already there. I don't know the orientation of people on school board, but I am a member of the LGBTQ community. And I think that that is in place, that it's good to see people who are successful if you're in a minority. So, and that gives those groups hope. So being in that position, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't have an agenda. I just know that when I can look up to somebody, when I, when I came out at sixteen, I think personally for a moment, all I thought was about being a member of the LGBTQ community was, we'll say RuPaul. Okay? That's not the case. It took me finding an LGBTQ affirming church with really good people who were like the people I can grown up with, everyday people going to work, who just loved each other. And to be able to see those people and have that hope that I could be that way too. And so in that capacity, just my being there, I think that there are probably plenty of students and educators, teachers and staff that can see that and be encouraged by that. But my mom, when I was little, said, she had taken me to the health department and they said, well, what do you call him? Because my mom's white and I'm a black baby. She said, I call him Grant. So when it comes to how our own things, it's not based on our sexual orientation and the other qualification on the rank. And that's where we start.
Elected versus appointed school boards, which is best for Madison City?
The explanation that I've heard about why we appoint our school board is that it keeps the politics out. Is one better than the other? I can't say honestly. Has it worked for Madison? I think that the data and the accolades said that it has. I like the fact that in the appointed format, that I'm not vying for one, my district, that I'm advocating on behalf of the entire system. So that is, from that perspective, I would say I, I like the appointment process and the way that we do it.
I'm ready. So obviously, you're a board member of the church. So this board here, how, how do you gauge, you know, beginning your goal? How do you know you're getting success for the board? How do you look at policy job if it's really going to be carried out? Knowing job, who can you want to make a policy with, really?
Well, I think we have to collectively establish measures of success. You can't. You can't, you know, there's no I in that team, you know? We have to work together as a, as a board and say, okay, what are our objectives? How are we going to get there and institute those measures of success? I mean, that's what I, what I would do. Specifically, we just need to know what, what we're working towards and then, and then go from there.
Mental health of our students continues to be a significant concern. As a school board member, what do you see as your role in ensuring adequate mental health services are provided to our students?
For one, we need to be intentional about breaking the stigma to do with mental health. I personally would talk about my own anxiety as I often do, given the opportunity. It's not a mental health issue that I'm medicated and have a process for, to kind of break down some of the walls that are there, the, the anxiety and the unintendedness there about mental illness. And I think that mental health is just so very important. We need to invest in more mental health professionals. I would imagine, I was looking online at the directory, we've got a good bit, good many in the school system already, that's great. One of the stats that I saw was that twenty-six percent of our children live in poverty. And that is, that's troublesome. That can make your mental health, that's a, that's a sense of hopelessness that if you can't just have your basic needs met, that can, how can you get a quality education even with the best school system? So, how do I fit into that? I'm always an advocate. We look for solutions together and I would intend to be a school member that sits on the side. I intend to be somebody to business the school system as interactive and supportive and says, raises money and says they're worth kind of help. That's what I would do in that space, I think it's very important.
Grant, thanks for that. Each one of us is a part of the session, so your education reform. What educational reforms would you be a favor of in life?
Talking to a lot of educators, I say a lot, a few people that were my teachers. Teachers need to be able to teach and students need to be able to learn. And as regulatory sensitive as our state is to not be overly burdensome in so many areas, I want us to be very careful, and I do want us to be very careful, not to put innocent students in the middle of adult problems. So, unless it has something to do with the quality of education, I want us to avoid all social issues and things of that nature. And give kids the room to learn and teachers the room to teach. And so, that's the way that I would approach any advocacy or opposition to any legislation. Does it give students the room to learn and teachers the room to teach? Obviously, there needs to be some accountability in there and we can't let everybody run waffle. But there are plenty of things, we like to major in the minors, as my pastor says, a lot of times, that I think we can do without a lot of the shuffle that happens in Montgomery and ends up leading down to our students. It creates teacher deficits and it creates unnecessary, I imagine, burden on students and those teachers who are under those deficits.
Grant, how many Board of Education meetings have you attended?
I haven't.
The vision for Madison City Schools is empowering all students for global success. What does this mean to you?
Going back to teaching, giving teachers the room to teach and students the room to learn and the word global, we have to expand and be respectful of backgrounds and expand our thought processes, expand those that we listen to and just really give, give ourselves permission to step outside of Madison, to step outside of Alabama. If we're going to be globally, have our students be globally competitive, then they need to have a global perspective. So, that's what that means to me. I also think that when we think of the word globally, we're talking about not just physically, but making yourself marketable and universal. I don't have my college degree, but I've been very blessed to push my way up and I'd like to see, and I know that this is a topic of conversation in schools, but I'd like to see a lot more emphasis on soft skills and things that you're able to do that don't require college and kind of breaks the stigma of you don't have your degree, so you're less than. I think that we can do something and make a difference for students by showing them what they're can do globally with a different set of skills than maybe what they would get going to college.
So, there's growth going on in Triana and how's that impacted Madison City Schools?
Well, my knowledge is limited about the relationship between Triana and Madison. I know that we don't get the full mileage from Limestone County that we do in Madison County. And so, I'm assuming that that would be part of the equation there, that we may not get the same support. I, I don't know that that'd be true. Can you confirm that? Is that accurate?
It might just be three years. We go, probably two years. So, I know really more about, so is, is they grow, how, how's, how's the growth of Triana affect Madison City Schools? You know, the growth years, how does that affect?
Oh, when we talk about it, they have two years to catch up with us. One of the points of conversation that was brought up when we were talking about one of the developments was how schools are funded and that if students start this year, that the funding comes next year for that student. So, if there's a two-year gap for them to be able to basically get on board with the fact that we've raised our taxes to support our schools, there's a math problem there for two years or three years. So, we need to be able to work on a solution that solves that problem if we're supporting Triana schools and continue to do so.
What do you see as the Board of Education's role versus the superintendent's role?
The business of the, of the district, financials, policy, advocating at the state level and the federal level, but the superintendent is the one who runs the show and is the administrator every day.
So, we're also, about the school budget and how they're looking through the balance and what can we be capable of funding and what can we afford, what can we fund?
I've not looked closely at the school's budget. I don't know if I saw the budget online, maybe I overlooked that. What I will say is that we work on a very lean budget, generally speaking, at a state level, as, as I understand. So, sometimes it's, we have to go back like we did in twenty sixteen, seventeen. We say, we need more. And it likes taxes, but you know, there's a, it's a balance of work and we can, obviously there's places that we can probably tighten the belt, but where can we go and find us sources of revenue, as we touched on earlier.
What is your impression of the special education services in Madison City Schools?
I've just recently been slightly oriented with that in a family way. My husband, his cousin, our cousin, little cousin, he has, he's autistic. He's going to be moving from, next to Kroger, I'm just losing the name right now. Mid-city to Rainbow, mid-town to Rainbow Elementary in a, in a class that's more scaled down and so forth. I know there's about fourteen hundred students that are, listening to information online that are in the special education program. But, and I know that he's going there, that's about what I know. But I'm glad to see that there was some reference to that population of the, of the school system. I, I don't have much more to offer than that, but I, I'm passionate about it because it's personal.
How would you balance the needs for teachers to continue growing and better hit those for professional development, but balancing that with the college challenges of providing substitute teachers so they're better?
It all goes back to, we've got to be creative. We can't, teachers, nurses, preachers, there's a few others I'm probably missing, y'all are so, are so underpaid service folks that there are. So, you know, but we can't, to me, it's not an option to say, we can't do something. We've got to figure out how we give our teachers that opportunity. Everybody thrives on professional development and being able to see this, those milestones in their career, feel like they're still doing something, growing and contributing. So, when it comes to balancing, you know, is there, do we rework the calendar potentially to add additional workdays and are there a lot for that where they don't need a substitute teacher? And how, how can we get creative? I, I don't know the answer, but I'm, I'm going to see, we'll sit down and figure it out because I think the teachers deserve that just as much as I deserve the ability to have time off in professional development and so on and so forth.
Grant, what should be the role of the school system in helping meet workforce development needs and is it doing enough?
As I've thought about and prepared for this, I've realized that unless I'm mistaken, I have not seen any crediting units in Madison City Schools. That's definitely, they're there, okay. That's a great program. I think there can be great partnership going back to the, and there's probably some of this that's already in existence, going back to the college is not the only way for it to be successful. How can we partner with Blue Orange and how can we partner with Toyota, Mazda and that type of thing to be able to give students alternatives that allow them to contribute to the community and be able to do what you're saying?
Since the state report cards were established, every school in Madison City Schools has achieved an A. How significant is this accomplishment and what does the school system need to do to maintain that success?
I think it's quite significant based on, I read only five districts out of a hundred and thirty-seven received that. So, it's absolutely something to be proud of. How do we maintain that? We remind ourselves that we're always continuous learners and we don't get comfortable. I've always done it this way, is the quickest way to, to lose that designation. So, let's make sure that we lean on the wisdom of the things that we've done successfully that we look forward and say, what do we need to do next to keep it up?
If you could improve one thing about Madison City Schools, what would it be?
I had a lot of conversation, I had that was probably obviously a apparent need of funding. How do we, how do we fund and adequately fund in a responsible way the programs and things that we need to help our students thrive, thrive in our teachers' lab?
So, do you know how you, of all your, you need a school to be in a way, being a private PTA, can you sort of experience that?
Not as an adult, as a child. I've built playgrounds and stuff like that with my dad, yes, but we're in the process of working to build our family right now, so that will change.
Do you think there should be a yearly survey, families, students, graduates, community residents, faculty and staff, about what they see as a major strength and shortcomings of these schools?
Surveys are about as good as the participation that you get. It's not, it wouldn't hurt anything, but I know that in my professional capacity, I'm tasked with making sure that we have our quality, experienced surveys and I try to get that participation and I've done fairly well with that. But in addition to that, I always just listen to what people are not saying, but they're really saying. And I think that if, if you're in a position of leadership, that's really where you get the best information you're looking for. You can dissect the data of what you think somebody meant about when they, how they answered on a survey or you can listen to what they say, you can have a conversation with them about it and I think that's much more impactful. So, but I also realize that we're all busy people and that a survey is an easy way to gather data from a lot of people. So, is there a problem with that? Absolutely not. Is there a more intimate way that you can gather that information and be of impact? I think so.
Well, I'm on a script. I'd like to understand your thoughts, particularly comparing and contrast the role of education systems and the role of Madison City Schools versus the role of family from a standpoint of education. Where, where does that responsibility, in your eyes, where does that responsibility start in the family, end in the family, start in the school, end at, end at the school?
Husband and I have talked about areas in town, you know, for what's available in Madison, about where the school system is good. And I said, the school system is good where the parents are good. When parents are involved, that makes all the difference. Teachers and classrooms that are overflowing have a hard time filling the gap in what you miss at home. So, it absolutely does start at home, but I don't, I'd be hard pressed, based on what I know about teachers, to ask, to find one, a, a teacher that said, I'm not doing everything I can to fill that gap. It absolutely starts at home, it comes to school. If you're a teacher, you've signed up for one of the hardest jobs that there is to be in service and so you're pouring yourself out of the need to cut a lot of days to fill that gap, but it absolutely does start at home. And it's, it's a challenge, it's tough to fill the, the gaps from home to school when kids are missing developmental stages, whatever the case may be, whether it's privileged kids who have their head stuck in a tablet all the time and don't know how to talk to people or whether it's the kid who just doesn't know how, what he's going to get to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grant, so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.